Next item, Madam President.
Number three on the agenda, 2016-075, void management of the city zoning code for affordable housing by removing the provision of section 7.12 shall not apply to program renewal and useless.
Motion away from the read by Councilor Hamleti.
Councilor Hamleti, would you want to speak?
I defer to my senior colleagues.
Councilor Finn?
I'm sorry, what is it, funny, um, junior colleagues?
He's giving you the mic.
Again, I thank you for, Councilor Hamleti, but again, I wanted to point out that it is Councilor Hamleti who's raised this again and brought it back out. You know, I don't see this as anything new. I see this as a restoration of the way it was before. The way it was when Councilor Hamley had actually first constituted the first inclusionary zoning ordinance that was intended to cover the entire city. There's nothing I can add that we didn't hear in terms of the need for such a measure that saw demonstrated through the public hearing, particularly the words that Reverend Bennett brought to it, but also the gentleman who testified to the reality of what's going out there in terms of affordable housing. It's so funny, look back in 1999, I think it was, when Councilor Hamley introduced this, it was what he kept referring to as police and teachers housing. You know, unfortunately, there's a misperception of what affordable housing is and what's often identified with housing that may be section eight or rental voucher housing type of things that are, again, focused on people who are in far more difficult financial straits. Affordable housing and the inclusionary zoning ordinance really intended for that group, it never gets any assistance, and that's roughly that group between 60% of median to 100% of median income, that those are the folks that really struggle. And I know, I get calls from them every day, and I'm sure some of you have, and some of you who refer them to me know that this is the reality, that people are struggling out there with the cost of housing. It's interesting, one of those little ironies, some people who even like walked at the concept of affordable housing, are then in turn, some of the same people who complained, saying, "Oh, my son or daughter can't live, afford to live in Quincy." So this is what this ordinance was meant to address. Sheldon Bennett raised what some of the ethical considerations are, but part of my interest in this, and what brought me into the city council, contrary to what I do during my day job, quite honestly, was my own concern about the approach that we take, which is a kind of less than planned approach to development within the city. And what my real concern always has been about the inclusionary zoning ordinance really focuses around the 40B provisions of the state law, is that those provisions oftentimes have been utilized for people who want to achieve something other than affordable housing, but use the 40B laws as a leverage and a pressure. It should be obvious to everyone with the number of units that are growing online here in the city of Quincy, that that ratio between affordable units and available units is growing to the point where we may not be meeting our obligations under 40B. If that's the case, that creates a very difficult situation. Some of the people who have talked about this impacting, and again, I'm sure Councilor Hamleti will get to his amendment in a moment, I think that given the good faith that people have approached the laws as it was, that certainly has to be entertained. But I think that on other matters, when people are talking about those who may even come in, who are looking for the certificate of consistency, those of us who participate under trust know that oftentimes, those issues are leveraged. And what this does essentially is it gives the city another tool in terms of working with developers who want to come in, ways of, again, through an inclusionary zone concept, which is swapping off one value for another value to the benefit of everyone. And so I just think it's time to put it back the way it was. Reverend Bennett put it very well, I mean, this was part of a master plan where the master developer had agreed to a significant amount of contribution into the affordable housing trust. That situation has changed, and if we're going to continue particularly, which I think is wise, which, again, I appreciate both the projects that we do presently have before us in terms of this mixed-use concept, we are talking about the addition of more residential units. So I would motion tonight that we accept 2006-075, vote that positive this evening. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor Finn. So, motion by Councilor Finn, no.
I have a question.
He did make a motion.
I ask that you withdraw the motion so I can move to...
Oh, excuse me, yes, I apologize. Yeah, I will withdraw, so I could recognize, Councilor Hamleti.
All right, Councilor Hamleti.
I'll figure you, my senior colleague. Senior, that's all right. Thank you, Councilor Finn. I've been banging this drum for so long and so loud up here, and we've talked about the downtown, and I don't feel like I have to advocate for this measure to pass because I have been doing so for quite some time, and it's forcing Walter Sumpkin through that, so I won't make it again. I will just point to the comments that were made tonight in support of this at the public hearing, with the Reverend said tonight about if we don't do something like this, if we don't change this, then downtown will become an enclave for the wealthy. And that was striking, because that's really what it will become. We heard from the Quincy teacher, who said he's struggling to stay in Quincy because of the lack of affordable housing, and he makes you think he's good enough to teach our kids during the day, but not good enough to be our neighbor after work. And that's what, that's what the debate is, that's what it comes down to. It's about our values as a community, it's about making sure that teachers, police, fire, and blue collar workers continue to live and raise their families in our city. Again, I'm not going to labor this, people can hold their conscience on it. But I would, I would like to make an amendment to the order that's before us. I believe, I had wrote down that moment today, and I asked that to put the record, the public record for it, for this hearing. The amendment would simply add a footnote that says, "This amendment shall not apply to any project for which application for the certificate of consistency has been submitted to the planning prior to April 1st, 2007." That specifically would exclude the Ocana Project and the LBC Project from being a part of this, given that LBCs have generously offered to pave so many roads. I think that the fact that the Ocana Project and the LBC Project are so far along in their planning and have already submitted certificates of consistency, that it just, it wouldn't, it'd be fundamentally unfair to hold them to a standard that would be played by a certain set of rules that were previously in existence, for us to change the rules while they're quite even close to the finish line. So I would ask, I would move that the body adopt the amendment as proposed to Councilor
So, motion to amend by Councilor Hamleti, seconded by Councilor Finn. Is this on the motion to amend, Councilor Forrest?
No.
On the overall motion, so...
Okay, so wait, so this will be, this vote will be on the motion to amend? Anyone wishing to speak? All right, seeing no one, Madam President, we call a roll. On the motion to amend per Councilor Hamleti's amendment.
Councilor Finn?
Yes.
Councilor Crowe?
Yes.
Councilor DeBon?
Yes.
Councilor Finn?
Yes.
Councilor Harris?
Yes.
Councilor LaFarge?
Yes.
Councilor Leeang?
Yes.
Councilor Hamleti?
Yes.
President Hughes?
Yes.
Nonetheless, Madam President.
Thank you.
And on the amended motion, I would move...
Okay, so, motion to approve by Councilor Hamleti, seconded by Councilor Finn, on the motion to approve, Councilor Forrest.
Thank you, Madam President. Along with Councilors Finn and Hamleti, I represent the support body on the city's affordable housing trust fund. And as we've come through these different projects, we've talked about when's the right time to bring affordable housing as the, as the inclusionary zoning ordinance back into the downtown area. And while we had agreed with Streetworks to make a set of policy that when the onsite units and money would be, been earmarked to the trust, we'll be able to sprinkle those investments throughout the city neighborhoods. We've been able to do that with a lot of the projects that are before us, and I think people need to understand that as we're talking about affordable housing, and we're talking about the URDP area, it doesn't necessarily mean these units are coming in onsite, that they're coming into downtown. Those developers have options, which is either to provide, provide those units onsite, or to do a payment into a program. And we've had developers citywide who have those options. So I think it's really important to people to understand that the affordable housing is a set rental rate, set by federal standards, it would be $1,500 of the one bedroom rate at this point for, for, for the affordable units. I think we've seen projects come, come to fruition, and we have the progress. And what I've had concerns as to, what are we doing relative to the financabilities of these projects with our partners? You know, we, Councilor Hamleti and I write frequently about public art, and it's something that what we've wanted to see come to fruition, and when do we become burdensome by adding things in addition like affordable housing? I'm going to be supporting this motion, I think you can support it. Councilor Hamleti actually really did it very well, and has the time to bring this back, and I think it's particularly respectable to those projects that have come before us that are pending, that they are in compliance as submitted, so I'll be supporting it this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Forrest. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, Councilor DeBon?
Thank you, Madam President. I was, I wasn't going to speak, and I'm not against affordable housing by any means, any means at all, before we got into the council, before I got into the council, it was to incentivize what had happened with the Streetworks deal. The Streetworks deal went, because you were giving away the house. You have to think about that for a second. These investors, these developers are taking chances as well. And that downtown has not been done for 40 years, and as a small business owner and a contractor, if you're going to squeeze me on one end, I have to figure out the profit margin that you're going to make. Now, I'm not against affordable housing, I'm not saying that by any means, but you have to understand that that downtown is not done yet. We're still in the middle phase here of finishing the downtown. It's a very important vital part of the city moving forward, in my personal opinion. And we still have some parcels left over left, and to shortchange some of those parcels by bringing these back in, I just feel that we got the momentum going, we're at it, and I want to see more affordable housing outside the district, I want to see more affordable housing coming out of that trust that we have close to $14 million today, that other investors and other developers can go in and start like really attacking these light areas outside the district. So, to put that into a, into a situation, I just feel that everybody's at risk here, everybody's going to take a risk, whether it's the citizens of the city, as well as the developers, us as, us as a council. So, when I look at it sometimes, is we're not finished, we're in the middle here, and there is going to be a situation that happens in this downtown or throughout the city where we're going to be increasing apartments, increasing condominiums, and it's happening throughout the entire city. I would like to see more affordable housing outside the district, the URDP. So, with that being said, I congratulate my two colleagues, I, you know, I like, I like the idea, but before I came onto the council, it was not set up that way, and to follow through on what's going on with the city, and I think we're going in the right direction, I don't want to lose the momentum that we're going, so I will not be in support of this. Thank you.
Councilor Crowe?
Thank you, Madam President. I thought I was finished. And as much as I appreciate my colleagues, the Honorable Counselor Large's comments related to his congratulations, I know that we have entered accordingly supposedly the era of alternate facts as it relates to political discourse, but let me point out something, I was here for Streetworks. If you think the failure of Streetworks had anything to do with the inclusionary zoning ordinance, that's just not factual, that's just not true. I think the very specific reasons we know why Streetworks failed, and I certainly don't want to dig those things up, as optimistic as we are in the new direction that we're moving, but if these were so limited, this ordinance was so nefarious and burdensome, how do you explain the hundreds and hundreds of units that have already been built outside that district? And again, inclusionary zoning, the whole concept is built upon giving, forget in some ways. And as these are negotiated, the inclusionary zoning ordinance is another tool that the city has working, not merely to get back something back from developers, but to also offer them something. And it's okay to approach something, but this kind of rude, amatory economic picture that you have of it just isn't true, and I feel like I have to state that. And again, the two projects, in fact, are here, and I agree with Councilor Hamleti's amendment to that very reason, it'd be fundamentally unfair to move the goal line again on them, given the fact that they've already started. But again, I just, all I can do is encourage my colleagues to understand the benefit that this brings, the hundreds of thousands of dollars, millions of dollars it's generating for other projects, and how critical it is to be, again, part of the entire city and not just outside. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor Finn. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Anyone else? All right, Madam President, we call a roll.
Councilor Finn?
Yes.
Councilor Crowe?
Yes.
Councilor DeBon?
No.
Councilor Finn?
Yes.
Councilor Harris?
Yes.
Councilor LaFarge?
Yes.
Councilor Leeang?
Yes.
Councilor Hamleti?
Yes.
President Hughes?
Yes.
Thank you.
The measure passed?
Yes. Next.
Number four on the agenda, 2017-056, gift of $300 to various donors to the DAF program.
Just make sure that the donor is recognized about the letter of correspondence, thanking them for the gift, and I would move the passage through this Madam President.
All right, motion to approve by Councilor Crowe, seconded by Councilor DeBon, on the motion, Madam President.
Councilor Finn?
Yes.
Councilor Crowe?
Yes.
Councilor DeBon?
Yes.
Councilor Finn?
Yes.
Councilor Harris?
Yes.
President, uh, sorry. Councilor LaFarge?
Yes.
Councilor Leeang?
Yes.
Councilor Hamleti?
Yes.
President Hughes?
Yes.
Page numbers. The gift passes. Next is number five on the agenda, 2017-057.
I move reference to the rules committee.
Okay, Council Order 2017-057, resolve amendment in City Council Rule 46 by Councilor Hamleti, with, there's a motion to move to the Rules Committee. Motion by Councilor Hamleti, seconded by Councilor Forrest. All of those in favor? Aye, the ayes have it, great, go, we move to committee. That will end our formal agenda for this evening. Next, we move to approval of previous meeting minutes. You have minutes from the April 3rd, 2017 meeting in front of you. Motion to approve the minutes by Councilor Leeang, seconded by Councilor Finn. All those in favor? Aye, the ayes have it, great. Communications and reports from Mayor, other city officers and the city boards. Madam President.
I do have two traffic requests to refer to ordinance committee for advertising. Board three, Council Finn, install one-way designation on Brook Street going north from Arlington Street to U4X, and install do not enter sign on Brook Street, U4X sign.
Okay. Motion. Refer to ordinance for advertising. Thank you. Did you want to speak? Council Finn? No. Okay, thank you. All right, unfinished business from the preceding meeting. Okay, seeing none. Reports of committees. Councilor LaFarge.
Oh, thank you. Sorry, it's been a little... Council order. Okay. Last, thank you, Madam President. Two weeks ago, the ordinance committee held its third meeting on Council Order 2016-285, in order to propose a land disposition agreement for parcel H1 in Hancock Park Lot, and we're to bring that matter out of committee this evening.
Okay. So, motion to move Council Order 2016-285, LTA, parcel H1 in Hancock Park Lot, motion to move out of committee by Council Forrest, seconded by Council Harris, on the motion. All those in, yes, Council Finn?
I'm feeling very good about the passage of the affordable housing ordinance, but it's at this particular point in time that I do wish to just register, and I know Councilor Forrest has suggested that this, but this really is something that we should have had established either a committee hearing or it should have been, I apologize to all the people in the council who had this idea this evening in the life, rather than to have it, bring it out from committee. The second thing is, is that this is such a large and important issue, that, again, the idea of not having notice out there regarding the fact that this is going to be with the council, that we're actually discussing that or considering that this evening, is not a good precedent to set. And so, again, I was seriously thinking of just simply, but it's clear cut to me what the role of this body is, that they wish to, they want to deal with it this evening. And, you know, I'm more than happy to accept that, but again, it's just not the way we should be doing things, particularly with things that are this critical, this important. So, with that, I've had my, the chance, and I will also point out that Mr. Geary is not here this evening. Secondly, that the final redacted version that I got, I believe, was at around 3:30 was the first one, and then there was a corrected one that started this here at 4:30 today. I did not know until Monday that this was going to be a matter that would actually be being brought up here. Now, things happen, clearly something happened here, but I just really want to stress, this is not a good precedent or way to be dealing with these matters. And so, with that, I'm happy to, you know, go with the rule of the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Finn. So I do want to address that briefly, because, so, when we decided to put this as an ordinance committee to be called out of committee on the agenda, rather than place it on the agenda officially, it wasn't an attempt to elude any public advertising, or to play any kind of game, or to not inform the council. The thought from the clerk was that, and myself at the time, is that because this was on the calendar, it was properly reported to the council, it could be brought out of the committee. So I don't think anything improper has been done, I realize, I don't, I don't think you're saying that either, or that you are, I don't know.
No, I, again, Madam President. Truly, I'm not suggesting there's any even proprity. What I'm suggesting, there might be, I can't even think of the word of it, but in terms of procedure, it's not good. I mean, we have, we have all of these people who are sitting here, we could have just as easily had a scheduled committee hearing, that we could have dealt with this with the full amount of time it deserves. I'm looking at the time now, it's not, it's close to 9:15. We're bringing up this topic, and again, I just can't understand how it happened or why it happened, but I just don't think it's appropriate. And again, I'm not, I don't think there's any malice behind it, but I'm suggesting that I believe that matters such as land disposition events, it's a bad practice to get into. I want to remind you, with the last meeting, we actually had a vote, and that vote was that it was to remain in committee, again, it was a, the proposal or the motion that was put forward failed, and was ordered to be kept into committee, you know, and part of the reason that was, was because we did not have our council at that particular meeting. And, again, we did not have Mr. McKinney at that, at that meeting, or is it McKinney? Forgive me, Pam, I'm sorry.
And then they are both here, exceedingly.
Yeah, I know they're both here, and they've been sitting here now for, since 7:30, and again, I'll, in my comments, because I certainly don't desire to keep them sitting here any longer, but, but again, it's just a way to run an hour, but thank you.
Okay, so, so, still on motion?
Motion to read out of committee.
All right, motion to read out of committee, seconded by Council Harris. Anything further on that motion? All right, Madam President, we call a roll.
Council Finn?
Yes.
Council Crowe?
Yes.
Council DeBon?
Yes.
Council Finn?
Yes.
Council Harris?
Yes.
Council LaFarge?
Yes.
Council Leeang?
Yes.
Council Hamleti?
Yes.
President Hughes?
Yes.
Nonetheless, Madam President, motion passed.
Thank you. Councilor Forrest?
Thank you, Madam President. At the last meeting, we did set to date as the evening that both, both Ms. McKinney, our city's real estate, the contractor, real estate president economist, as well as the attorney for our city council, Mr. Jim Shea, to be in attendance. At this time, I'd like to recognize Ms. Pam McKinney, so that she can give her comments and involve, relative to her, involved in this project, we'll then allow Q and A from the body, and then proceed to have Mr. Shea come forward, so, Ms. McKinney.
Just a, just a point of clarification from the clerk, if that's, if she can address the body, is that something that can happen now?
Sure. Do you just move to, 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 to...
Point of parliamentary procedure.
Yes, Council Hamleti.
This matter isn't regender, it's not, it's not, there's no motion before us, the matter that we voted to come out of committee, if someone makes a motion to approve on the motion we can make, we can ask questions, but there's nothing before us.
Motion to approve made by Council Forrest, seconded by Council Harris.
On the motion?
Yeah, on the motion.
Thank you, Madam President, on the motion, thank you, Mr. Promentarian, on the motion, Ms. McKinney, please come forward. Thank you, we have great respect for your, we have great, great respect for you, and your ultimate ambition, our passion, your advice to us, and I know we've had a chance to discuss briefly prior to each other today, but for those in the audience, for those at home, I'd love, for everyone else around the world, I would like to get your take on this conveyance, and in particular, we talked about the scale of this project, the problems of scale, and the intangible benefits, as well as the opportunity to activate our main streets that wouldn't be provided without this command, so.
Sure. I understand that some of what was described by the appraisal has been presented, and, you know, and thereby a description of the conveyance itself, but it might be helpful for me just to summarize what the conveyance consists of, and then talk about both the value that, from the overall budget appraisal, and also, to your question, what else beyond the price is being received, if you will, as a result of the conveyance. And as you know, or may know, the, the conveyance as it's been conceived to this point has two parts. There are lots of various sort of details, but they're fundamentally two parts. One is that the development sponsor is to receive a parcel that is sort of buried on the Hancock Lot today, to be assembled with land which they already own, so a conveyance from the city of a part of the Hancock Lot to the development sponsor. And part two is a conveyance from the development sponsor to the city of Quincy to enable the widening of... the widening of Hancock Street, the creation of, of public realm improvements in Hancock Street, as well as the use of what are, what is now private land to enable the creation of a public access from Hancock Street to what will be a public garage in the middle of the Hancock Lot. And I, I, I talk about these two parts because you, because, because the conveyance isn't, you, you can't talk about the conveyance without recognizing that there are properties going from the city to the developer and from the developer to the city. Both parts have to be acknowledged, so it's a swap, if you will, of sorts. It happens that the land that the city intends to convey to the private sponsor is bigger than the parcels that the developer intends to convey to the city, by about 4,500 square feet. So, the city will give about a 10,000 square foot lot, again, without frontage, it's a landlocked parcel in the middle of the Hancock Lot, the city will give that 10,000 feet to the developer to combine with its existing land, and the developer will peel a piece of their existing land off of the Hancock Street frontage, as well as land which runs, again, from Hancock Street back to the garage, totally about 5,600 feet, so 10,000 from the city, 5,600 square feet to the city, so a, a net receipt, if you will, by the development sponsor of about 4,500 square feet. Now, again, it's in those, it's, you can't, you don't get one without the other, they, they go in lockstep. And, you know, I think that, so let's talk about the value first, and then we'll come back to the intangibles, because there is something beyond the money. The value of the conveyance in total has to consider, again, we give and again. And it's important to recognize that the entirety of the conveyance is in service of a development outcome at the end. So, you can't just value the little strip along the front, and you can't just value the little strip along the side, and you can't just value 10,000 square feet of city parking land as landlocked with the frontage. All of these conveyances go to enable a development to occur. And the, the appraiser has rightly taken, and I've reviewed the appraiser closely, has rightly taken the view that the value of the conveyance is essentially the difference between what the developer has before the conveyance versus what the developer has after the conveyance. It's, you know, all of it being a highest investment for residential development in the end. So, again, just to clarify, before the conveyance, the developer has a 22,200 square foot parcel, on which they can develop, according to capacity studies that were done by qualified engineers, can develop a 90, essentially a 93,600 square foot residential building. After the conveyance, again, with that incremental additional 4,500 square feet, they have a parcel that is now 26,700 square feet, again, 4,500 square feet bigger, on which they can build 116,000 square feet of residential development. So, their project is being enhanced by the extra 4,500 square feet of land area that they get after the conveyance is done, and that additional square footage capacity leads to, guess what, higher value. So, if it's worth, and, and again, the appraiser did a very nice job, I think, of selecting comps and adjusting comps, it's, their property is worth $2.8 million before the conveyance, their property is worth $3.5 million after the conveyance, which means that they have a value, a delta, if you will, of about $500,000, that, I'm sorry, 3.3 million, so 3.3 million minus 2.8 million gives you a $800,000 of enhanced value as a result of the overall conveyance. Now, that looks out to about $125 a foot for the land that's being conveyed, which, again, I would underscore, is generally consistent with, guess what, that other conveyance that you looked at not too long ago, and, and again, methodology here of looking at development capacity, and it's that the value of development capacity is, is, is the same essential methodology, delivering essentially a similar result on a, on a per land basis. So, in my opinion, the appraisal has been done appropriately, the, the price, if you will, is a reasonable price for a market rate conveyance. But I think it's important to recognize, to Council of Forest's question, that there is, there are intangibles, I think, beyond the price that are worth mentioning. And, again, the, the public realm improvements in Hancock Street, and very importantly, the public's ability to access this garage that you're building, or that we're building, from Hancock Street are absolutely essential to the functioning of the downtown in the way that it has been planned and talked about to this point. And without ownership of the private land that's needed to install those improvements, you cannot execute on the vision that has been talked about. Again, so essential is that Hancock Garage access. In addition, the linking of this project to the public garage results in a much more efficient use of not just the development sponsor's land, so more units, but frankly, it makes the use of the city's linked land contribution, that 10,000 feet, it actually gives it a reason to be, because otherwise, the highest and best use of that land is, it's a landlocked parcel without frontage, and it's really only in an assemblage with the adjoining lands that that parcel can realize its true potential for residential development. That's the highest we have used today. And last, I think, it's worth mentioning that, again, this linkage between the development parcel and the garage provides some additional revenue, frankly, to, and again, reason for being for the public garage. It helps to support the revenue stream that will eventually be needed to, to generate debt service to cover at least a portion of the lot share, of, of at least a portion of, of the garage construction. So, again, those are, those other things, the importance of the Hancock Garage linkage, the importance of widening sidewalks and so on, are hard to put a dollar amount to, but again, I think it's helpful or important to understand that first is the price, and is it fair and reasonable from a market perspective? And then, are there things, and I believe there are, about the conveyance itself which help to advance the broader vision for downtown? So, that's, that's it in a nutshell.
So, I think the other piece that I had is relative to the economy of the project, it's important to note, so that the city's not granting any tax relief through this LTA. And secondly, I just wanted you to talk on the new growth. So, today, as reference says, one of my favorite topics, blighted properties, the existing blighted properties are contributing 40,000 annually to the tax rolls. When this project comes online, the anticipation is 478,000 annually on the tax rolls, with a increase of 1,000, over 1,000 percent increase in annual property tax, every loan, straight up, property tax, no, one, no A, three, just no success, again, so.
Yes, exactly. Unlike the O'Connell project, which had some tax relief associated with it, in order to make possible that high-rise construction type of logic, this is a market-based, stick over podium style development, not unlike other projects that are being constructed in Quincy, and it will pay taxes in accordance with your assessing office's assessment for the parcel, both as it sits, there'll be a land attribution, which, again, the property, much of it is today exempt, at least a portion that is now in city hands, and, and of course, on completion, you will have 171 units generating adverb taxes for the city of Quincy. Again, that, that's, that's not intangible, that's, that's real.
You know, and I think, you know, the piece to recognize, and I see you did a great job in explaining the conveyances and the frontage, and the enhanced value that the widening sidewalk brings, and I think part of what we're able to say through the streetworks learning process, with a lot of the planning documentations that live as a result of that, and it was a prior version of this body, the Design Guidelines for Downtown, and this is exactly what the city spelled out as our vision, is what we wanted downtown. We wanted to activate the main street, wanted to widen the sidewalk, wanted to install sidewalk cafes, and so public, public realm improvements. This body set a policy as to what our expectations were, and the LBC, to their credit, came forward with a, with a proposal that does just that. So, I just really wanted to recognize that it's a policy set forward here that triggers this project, that they literally had to back their building on to become into compliance, and that's why, you know, us being able to go forward and do the land swap, like you said, to get the public access, if you do not have the ownership, you cannot execute. We've talked about the liability that exists with the town roof, through the atrium space that we're now calling it, through the drainage made utility infrastructure that we know, we know has long been antiquated and has been a part of the reasons for, for the delay of development in downtown, is we can have the infrastructure in place, we could handle it all in downtown, and now we do. So, I think those are all, you know, when we talk about tangible and tangible benefits, important to that.
Well, I guess I would, I would make only one, one additional comment, and that is that the development sponsor here could have gone forward with a buy right development at least 18 months ago.
So, that, and I think.
So, it's, they have, they have, to their credit, they have worked to try to accommodate, not just the letter of the Design Guidelines and so on, but to try to accommodate the city's needs with respect to what's a pretty complicated underground construction.
And I appreciate you recognizing that, because it isn't just the COC process through the planning board, it is opportunity for downtown development. They could go through the zoning board and go forward with that project through a different manner. This is meant to streamline the process, and it does give the opportunity to work with the city. I do want to thank the LBC for that. I don't, I do, Madam Chair, I can yield my time for, for any event, I'd like to just reserve the right to that, the, of Mr. Shea, once everyone else has had their questions of Ms. McKinney.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone? Council of Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, Ken. I wanted to thank you for taking the time to make a speaker class, awaiting the free hours, and then here. I just have a question, the appraised value that we have at Congress, so the original amount is the net valuation of $500,000, and then it's second here, and the revised altogether that got a couple of hours ago, that it's now going to be appropriated for, I'm sorry, purchased for $473,060.
That's right.
So, there's a difference in the amount, do we have a new appraisal amount, or why is it not the less than?
What we have is, because the property, the project had been redesigned, re-engineered several times over, and to accommodate the city's needs for, like, a, quite a specific group relocation in the atria, they have overspent their engineering budget because of that additional requirement of the city to.
I'm sorry, they, as in?
The, the development sponsor has had to spend their money more than once, in other words, to redesign to accommodate the city's requirements. And Woodward and Curran, as your engineering consultants, did a thorough review of the engineering expenditures on the project, to verify, validate that there is, in fact, a premium cost associated with their engineering, having to re-engineer to accommodate the city's request, and that reflects the, the so-called offset. You may recall, when we did the O'Connell appraisal, there were what we call development premium costs associated with, in that case, park construction and park maintenance, remember that? That, that represented an offset, because looking at the comps, if you will, in the market, no other comps had to spend extra money to accommodate city requirements for, in that case, delivery of a park maintenance, you know, in perpetuity, et cetera. And in this instance, it was a matter of, again, that 18 months worth of engineering and re-engineering in response to city requirements for the subgrade infrastructure that resulted in, again, a, a premium, if you will, to the development budget on the order of, I think it was $27,000, give or take. That amount was not simply taken on at face value, it was subjected to a peer review by your own engineers to establish whether or not the, the extra engineering costs were valid and appropriate, and I think, I don't know if Dave White is here or not, but Dave White from Woodward and Curran did a workup and analysis of their, their engineering cost budgets, and that is what results in the offset. So, the appraisal is as it stated.
Minus, tell me something about.
Minus, minus an offset to reflect this additional premium cost.
So, just to reiterate on what you're telling me, so the $500,000 is the appraised value. The developers had worked a bunch of years on a plan that they were originally going to go with, we had asked them to make adjustments, that was our request as a city, they had to incur additional costs because of our request, and that document and that amount was approved. I, I don't have that document in front of me. I'm not saying that they didn't incur costs, I, I know engineering costs are very expensive. When you go to even just print a plan, when you talk about 24 by 36, it's very expensive, but, you know, I, the only thing I see in front of me is the net valuation's $500,000, and then there's a sentence in here, or two sentences, that say, okay, well, now it's going to be 473. And I'm not saying that Woodward and Curran aren't qualified to approve that document, but we're the ones that are approving that value, not Woodward and Curran.
We're the ones approving.
Yeah, understood.
So, I, so, you know, is there anyone that can speak to that, or to pass some paperwork up here, so that we can just take a look and see, you know, sort of validated that this was the amount that was, that was overcharged to them?
Yeah, so if you, if you need to, to hear directly from the, from the horse, if you will, I think Dame's.
Well, to have the board, it would have been better, I think, if they had us in.
Through you to Council of Yang. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam.
So, there was a request by LBC to look at a number of expenses that they had, this is the documentation. So, what's yellow was deemed appropriate, and that's how we came up with 27,000, we more than welcome to have that, and if you'd like to have Dave White explain to you what the subitems are, it's basically.
You don't have copies, any chance to?
I can, I can, you can, can we lift them out of that copy there?
Can we let them have that copy, David? Right now? Yeah. We have that copy.
No, I'm just saying to my colleagues, I think it would be helpful if they had it.
Yes, well, the... Well, again, the $27,000 is represented in that particular... There's a large list of questions that were put before Woodward and Curran, and the bottom line is those are the ones that were verified and represented.
I don't want to keep you up your mom going through it.
No, not a problem. I just wanted you to know that you asked, that's what... That is the basis of the $27,000.
Okay, can we have copies of these, if you have as well? And can actually just have a question for you? I might have...
Yeah. I'm not an engineer, so I'd prefer to have the engineer speak to the... Speak to that cost, but no... But anyway.
Yes, so, the second question I got here, you talked a lot about the importance of the garage and how that project is essential to this project and how they're sort of co-dependent on each other. Why is that in the appraisal when not considering the garage?
The garage is not a part of the land, though. It's just, it's not appropriate to the development of a market rate conveyance for land. It is important, obviously, to the economics of the garage. The land lease, or the parking lease, is important to the construction of the garage and the way that the garage works. And I think that because the garage is a composite that will serve not just this project, but many other projects, it is important to look at the composite of the garage operation and the garage cost, rather than try to look at the value, if you will, again, not land value, but value attributable to any one project that may rely on the garage. Because the garage, frankly, can't survive economically without all of the users who are expected to come and exhibit demand there doing so. And at this point, as I think we've talked about before, the final cost of the garage remains a question mark. We don't have a final cost. We have a formula. We know how the formula's going to be applied. We don't yet have a completed pro forma that will show exactly how all of the parking rent streams are going to come together to support the operation. And so, it's, I think, and to say that it's difficult understates the problem, if you will, in trying to parse out, you know, value contribution to the garage in any one project, because no one project is going to be sufficient to cover the operating or the debt service.
I do, too. You're mentioning that you don't have a final cost for the city to go under the garage. I guess it's a separate issue in and of itself, but again, going back to... And I'm not the appraiser, you're the expert, and I trust your opinion, so I apologize if I'm, you know, digging into this a little bit too much and having you explain it, but I'm under the understanding that any project within that area is going to be desirable for a couple of reasons. You're close to the train, you have accessible parking, you know, that's why we have a Ross that's up in the scene a lot, and that makes it attractive for these retailers and other developers to be in here, because you have access to, oh, it jacks up their value of not just the land, the houses in the area, to be close and in the vicinity of, again, public transportation, whether it be bus racks or city stations and parking. And so, if those things affect the value of a home or the value of a retail spot, when you're talking about these cars per foot, why wouldn't it then affect the piece of land, essentially, that we're freezing?
You should understand that the value accounts for that. The values predicated on comps for other downtown sites that have similar attributes, that have parking, that have proximity to you. So, understand that it's not as if the, we'll say, the influence of having parking nearby or the influence of being in the downtown in your transit is wholly unaccounted for. That's accounted for in the way that the land comps have been selected and adjusted. So, in that sense, the value of the location and the features and attributes of the land is absolutely being accounted for in the appraisal and in the price. What I'm suggesting to you is that the revenue stream associated with this project's contribution to a garage operating pro forma, the O'Connell's contribution, the contribution maybe of courthouse occupants, the contribution of retail customers and employees, each of those demand sources is going to exert a different kind of influence on the garage economics, and therefore, the measuring of how the... How any one project is going to help the city build a garage is hard to parse out, project to project.
Okay, so there are too many intangibles, basically, for the garage, to be able to do what comes with and factor value of the work.
Yeah, because it's an aggregate. The garage value and the benefit to the city of having all of these parties helping is going to result in a blended pro forma, a blended value for the garage. Again, hard to parse out whose contribution is making the garage possible, and how do you measure, you know, that benefit that comes from this source versus that source? We just know that everybody's contribution is necessary, or is going to be necessary, to getting the garage built and to make its operation feasible and its functioning and its ability to pay debt service, viable. But you should understand that the value of the land that the city is receiving accounts for the benefit of having that parking nearby and being in the downtown.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, I think there's a little redirect from Counselor Forrest. Counselor Forrest?
Thank you.